This is the travel expense. I think what you're proposing in the legislation is better than what we have now.
Senator Casey. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Chief. Thanks for being here and thanks for everything they're doing in this incredible program. Am I correct, though, that most of the placements that you're sending these people to are out of state, that they're detox facilities, with detox facilities, but they're shortage care facilities? And as you said, that they are taking folks from Maine because they recognize how follow them? The second part of the question is, do you have some, any sense of the capacity out there? And it's wonderful that these places in Florida and elsewhere are taking our people from nothing, but how long is that going to last as we ramp up this effort around the state? How much can we expect people in other states to, or facilities in other states to keep taking our uninsured people?
In terms of the availability of detox facilities, when we have someone that requires detox, and not everybody does, we've had people actually attempt to self detox themselves to a point where they're not going to be physically ill so we can get them to rehabilitation facility. In terms of the availability of detox locally, virtually nonexistent. I know that Milestone, one turns away and one to two dozen people a day. We've had people come into our facility asking help through Operation Hope that require detox. Unless we can get them into Milestone, there's really nowhere we can send them. We've actually sent people to the emergency room at hospitals only to have them released within two hours back from the streets. So there is a significant lack of detox here in the state of Maine. In terms of these agencies and facilities helping us into the future, a lot of folks that run these facilities are leaving themselves in recovery. Part of being in recovery is reaching out to others and trying to help. They've gone above and beyond what we could ever expect. We estimate probably close to half a billion to three quarters of a million dollars in donated treatment costs have been given to our program so far. We can only ask them to do so much. We never meant our initiative to be the end all. This was merely a Band-Aid until somebody could do something. Somebody being you guys. You know, as police officers, we get called to bad situations, and it got to the point where as long as people were talking about what they're going to do and coming up with plans, people were still dying. And somebody needed to do something. This isn't the perfect plan, but it's the plan we've got.
I want to thank you for your program. I was in Boston this summer and paying attention to what was going down there with their info program and came home and like within a week or so picked up that we're doing a stand in New York and I want to thank you for taking this on. I often say there's, that policy needs to be the law for everything, but sometimes good people stand up to do good things, and I think your leadership has proven that. The one question I, Senator Case did ask you about the treatment, but I guess I was under the impression, and listening, and I do sometimes come down here and sit to Health and Human Service testimony about treatments and stuff, what it has to do. And I was under the impression, and I'm getting from you that it is the case, and your complete testimony is that, I was under the impression from Health and Human Services that anyone who wanted treatment was in a bed was able to get it here in Maine. And from your testimony, and I understand, you know, from the lack of insurance when you have seventy thousand people in Maine, and I'm assuming that a lot of them are probably with drug addiction, and your testimony is stating that this isn't the case, that there isn't a bed room. So you're having to spend a lot of money to send people out of state, and it's in transportation because they're given free care. So even that care is something that's not being paid. So I thank you for bringing that to the attention of this committee appropriations and numbers of Health and Human Services, because that isn't the impression I was getting when I was still running this testimony on drug problems and saving aid and the care that the people are getting and saving aid.
And if I could just respond, early on in Operation Hope, we reached out, we understood that there was this unused treatment capacity in the state of Maine that people were talking about. We were given a list apparently of eight facilities statewide that were funded through the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services. If you look at that list and you sit down and drill through that list, many of those facilities have particular requirements. There are facilities that cater specifically to homeless people. There is facilities that specific to people on Maine care. If you were a twenty-five-year-old, young person, for example, living in the city of Portland or Bangor, you're uncovered by Maine care, you don't have healthcare insurance coverage through your employer or through your parents' employer, ultimately, there is no help.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Mark, I think it's Hathaway.
Is it Hathaway? Good morning.
Good morning.
Hathaway. My name is, I'm Hathaway. I can't possibly speak as well as Chief Simmons, who's there with me, I promise you. There are some well-spoken, inspired police chiefs and sheriffs out in the fall. I want to talk just briefly on two topics. First, the end drug agents. I think, I'm confident that all of you and certainly everybody seated behind me, I appreciate the fantastic amount of work that Director McKenney and his staff have been doing. At the local level, not in Bailey, not in Bangor, can we possibly tackle the complexities of modern-day drug problem without main drug enforcement? When we call, we expect someone is going to pick up the phone, and they always do. If we're going to continue to expect that main drug is going to be successful in helping us at the local level, then they need people to do it. The second thing I want to talk about briefly is the detox center, the proposed detox center in Bangor. In the Bangor region, we need help. And when I refer to the Bangor region, I'm talking about a six-county region, where people travel into Bangor every day to work, to shop for their medical treatment, for their entertainment, to buy their drugs, to seek out drug treatment options. In over the past, in the past twelve months, eleven died in hallways, parks, and automobiles due to complications associated with addiction. I desperately want to replicate the good work that's already been done in Portland, Scottsboro, Damascada, Bath, West Paris. They've all have collaborations and partnerships established with addiction treatment facilities. We need this manual, we need this in our region. We are desperate in our region, and I understand that this state is desperate as it is, and there are problems in all four corners of our state. But I can only speak to what I see in our region, and I'm excited about the potential that I may have the opportunity to partner with a sustainable addiction treatment facility. And I'm hoping that you will please support that. Thank you.
Questions for the police chief?
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time. Troy Morton. Now it's good afternoon.
Senator Hanbrook, Senator Rosen, Representative Patrondo, Representative Powell, distinguished members of the Joint Committee on Appropriation, Finance, Criminal Justice, and HHS. I think I've got it all in there. A first-year sheriff, so I'm still going to throw out my rookie cards if I offend anybody. First-year sheriff. My name is Troy Morton, Sheriff of Prescott County. One would argue that I run the largest detoxification center in the state. I'm here today to testify in support of LD-1537 on behalf of, in my cap, in, of my capacity of Sheriff of Prescott County, as well as an executive member of Maine Sheriff's Association. I am pleased to report to you that the Maine Sheriff's Stand is one unanimous in our support of LD-1537. Substance abuse crisis mainly is complex. A thorough review of crime stats, cause of deaths, emergency room treatments highlight how serious the problem can become. While minor crimes have decreased in Maine, violent crimes have risen. To a great extent, these increases are caused by those who are under the influence at the time of crime or those seeking the means to obtain substances. The state medical examiner's office yearly reports will show a steady increase in substance abuse-related deaths, many involved in multiple drugs. Lastly, a review of medical treatment in Maine's emergency rooms will show the overwhelming effects that dangerous drugs are having on people, both physically and mentally. In order to combat this vicious cycle of substance abuse, we must utilize enforcement, treatment, and recovery. Strengthening law enforcement will allow public safety officials to conduct more drug investigations, investigations with a focus on drug traffickers and not just the end user. Main drug enforcement operates under a task force approach, utilizing state, county, and municipal offices. This collaborative partnership will help stem the flow of drugs throughout the state of Maine. While sanctions alone will not abolish substance abuse, it remains a key component. This approach will not fix all of the overcrowded experience in our county jails, although, however, it will certainly make an impact and provide additional options to the criminal justice system. I'm going to bear away from the testimony just for a minute because there were so many questions about the use of officers from county sheriff's offices and municipalities going to main drug enforcement. I have two deputies assigned from my office to main drug enforcement. It is the way to do this. We have to tackle the enforcement at a task force mentality. Although you're giving up some of those officers, they provide a tremendous resource back to our agencies. We still have crimes that are drug-related and robbery. So you can't just investigate the drug crime, somebody's still going to investigate the robbery side. Having those officers be part of main drug and still be part of our, our office allows us to take care of these other crimes. It's a tremendous way to share information, and I can't think of a better way that the program works. When those officers come back to your agency, they are very skilled, writing warrants, intelligence. I think having main drug solely on its own is a bad direction for us to go in. We need people to share the intelligence. Somebody spoke about that earlier. Strengthening prevention and treatment and recovery efforts is critical to reducing substance abuse. A thorough study of substance abuse conducted in Bangor by Community Health Leadership Board identified the essential need of social detoxification centers. Currently, those crisis as a result of substance abuse have limited access to treatment. Many who suffer from substance abuse attempts to address their addiction on their own, some end with tragic results. Others present themselves to the emergency room only to receive medications, general guidance, and left to detox on their own. In many cases, those struggling substance abuse find themselves in crisis violating law. Having pending legal matters in confinement only compound the ability for someone to successfully combat this disease. Having a successful pathway to recovery in place will help law enforcement divert individuals before someone loses their life or criminal activity takes place. Partnering treatment and long-term recovery is the final step in the process. Utilizing peer support recovery centers throughout the state will help individuals from relapsing and the prevention of recidivism. In summation, in order to break this vicious cycle of substance abuse, we must increase our enforcement, treatment, and recovery efforts. Increase of law enforcement will slow down the flow of drugs and related crimes. Treatment and recovery will help provide the essential tools necessary for those who want to manage this serious disease. Once again, I appreciate your time and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. Representative Fry.
Thank you, Senator. Good afternoon, Sheriff. At the beginning of your testimony, you talked about how not that kind of jail is probably the best detox center in Maine. So I'm wondering if, because I know you've not talked about that in sort of a, I'm wondering if you could just take a minute to just explain what you mean by that and how you envision some of the resources that are talked about in this bill. I feel that helped make your situation a little bit more favorable, recognizing that not that county has not the highest in Maine numbers.
Thank you, Representative. Bringing up that question, not to disagree with the Attorney General, but my population by jail, state-rated capacity is one hundred and fifty-seven. Today's population required to roll down to three hundred. And so when we look at the numbers of those incarcerated, most of them are there for substance abuse-related issues. They're either committing crimes while they're under the influence, or they're committing crimes to gain the means to purchase those drugs. There are often times, unfortunately, when people present themselves for treatment and there's nowhere to go. They're in their emergency room and they're ready back into the environment that they came from. Sometimes they find themselves in crisis. Those crises lead to death, or they lead to violations and crimes, and those folks are ended up being arrested and brought into the jail. They have nowhere to go. Sometimes, and I believe the court system is afraid to release them. I've heard parents come to my office and say, please, do not release my child. This is the safest place for this person. That's sad. That is not healthy, not a healthy way to treat people or help them get through this situation. We need that detoxification center. We have some longer-term recovery centers here in Maine, probably not enough, but we have some. We're really missing that first step of immediate detoxification. Many of these folks have not do this on their own, and certainly doing them in the jail is not a healthy environment and very costly, costly for all of us.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Julie Finn.
Good afternoon. Senator Hanbrook, Senator Rosen, Representative Patrondo, Representative Powell, members of the Criminal Justice Committee and members of the Public Safety Committee for our day. My name is Julie Finn, and I represent the Maine Judicial Branch. Today I am filling in for Marion, which could not be here. The Judicial Branch today, and it's not being circulated, presents an amendment to LD-1537, an act to combat drug addiction through enforcement, prevention, treatment, and recovery. This amendment asks for no new appropriations. Instead, it asks for a transfer from the budget category, personal services, to the budget category of all other. The Judicial Branch thus supports this bill as an effort to combat the terrible drug problems that plague Maine and that we've heard about with Natalie this morning. During 2015, there were several judicial retirements resulting in vacancies on the bench. In total, there were seven vacancies. These unfilled positions have resulted in the salary savings that you see in the amendment. We ask that these funds be transferred to the all-other budget line to accommodate a planned increase in criminal trials. In the spring of 2016, judicial officers will be working to eliminate the backlog of criminal cases, many of which are drug and drug-related. As you may have heard, the Supreme Judicial Court justices will be sitting as trial justices throughout the state. In addition, we will be adding more criminal dockets in order to hear and resolve existing cases to free up court and judicial time to focus on new drug matters which will come before the court with the deployment of the new MDEA agents. Adding drug agents as this bill proposes is only one part of law enforcement. Another aspect is a swift and fair trial for a jury of one's peers. That is what we are trying to accomplish with this amendment. The additional scheduling of criminal dockets in the spring will result in a need for more jury trials. If more jury trials are scheduled, we will need more money in order to pay the jurors. These funds must come from the all-other budget line. In addition to funding juror time and mileage, the all-other funds will be used to hire temporary clerical and security help and for mental health competency exams to support the additional cases that we expect. In closing, the Judicial Branch is not requesting any new funding. We are simply requesting a transfer of funds from the personal services line to the all-other line to support an increased judicial focus on crime, especially drug-related cases. Thank you for your time, and I would be happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. Representative Fry.
Thank you. Assistant firm, so I appreciate that I had the chance to speak with Marion Nish about this recently. My understanding is that there are a couple of counties where the jury trial docket is so jammed, and are on enough days where they're coming up because of judges, or special judges. It's like York County, Macam County, I think Aristick might have been one of them. The idea is that this would be using existing resources for a temporary falcon in court time that would then ramp back down, not require future viable resources because the dockets would be unqualified. Is that essentially what is currently being done?
Yes. Thank you, Representative Fry. That is correct. Call it something like a blitz, if you will, to get through the cases that are existing and that are backed up a little bit in certain areas of the state in particular. And I should probably add that the, part of the reason that the backlog also exists in addition to the great number of cases, the vacancies themselves last year did slow things down a bit. So we're just trying to do a blitz, get through a number of drug-related cases, and then hopefully things will return a little more to the normal state. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Michael, is it Solschalk?
Solschalk, yes, sir.
Solschalk.
I was going to write Mike on there, but I didn't want to confuse things anymore than that. So good afternoon. My name is Mike Solschalk. I'm the chief of the Portland Police Department. It's nice to see everybody. Certainly thanks to all of the chairs and all of the committee members for your time and energy on the first day of the session to try to tackle this particular issue. To provide some context in the world that we're working in, in the city of Portland, some analysis showed that the last ten homicides in the city of Portland were substance abuse disorder-related. Five of those were alcohol-related, and five of those were drug-related. I would tell you that in the end of July in 2015, we had fourteen overdoses in a twenty-four-hour period in the city of Portland. Two of those were fatalities. All of them involved Narcan, and all of them involved CPR at one level or another. I will tell you that drug overdose calls for police officers have gone up by twenty percent. Over four hundred calls for service in 2015. That's officers responding to overdose situations. The Attorney General through the medical examiner's office is much better suited to tell you about overdose fatalities because that's where that, those decisions and those determinations should come from. Calls for service, boots on the ground, police officers, paramedics responding to calls, that's up twenty percent. Narcan use by paramedics in the city of Portland is up by forty-nine percent, from fourteen to fifteen. And that's as of a few weeks ago. That's context. Not all of those dosages are created equal in the sense that a lot of folks are now given Narcan in the community, which I believe is a good thing. It is a miracle drug that's saving lives every day. But as far as paramedics and medico units responding, that is up drastically from one year to the next, and that's only going up, and we can expect that to continue through 2016. We talk about the violent crime, and the sheriff talked about this briefly. Property crime overall is down, crime is down. My robberies are through the roof, fifty percent increase in 2015 in comparison to 2014. That's not to say that because you suffer from a substance abuse disorder that you're a criminal. That is to say that just like any other neighborhood, any other population, there is a small percentage of that group that is committing crimes in our communities to support their habits, to survive, day to day, and that's what they're trying to do. They don't want to get sick. The point turns into an issue where you're not, no longer trying to get high, right? You see, high, you think that's, that's fun. You're trying to survive day to day. And as a piece of that, there are a small percentage of folks that are committing crimes in our community. And I would definitely say that those robbery increases are due to this drug issue, certainly in the city of Portland. Now, I've said the city of Portland a few times. What I will guarantee in this very dynamic situation, complex situation around substance abuse disorders, there's a list of guarantees. The very first one is this, this problem does not care about borders or demographics, rural versus urban. It does not care. It doesn't care how much money you're making, doesn't care how old you are, it impacts everybody. And that needs to be said, certainly in this chamber here in Augusta as well, because we can have issues around, well, Norland Maine versus Southern Maine, this is impacting everybody, everybody across the board. It's incredibly important that we try to get a handle on this thing. So it doesn't care about borders one way or the other. Another guarantee, we can pay now or we can pay later. You're going to pay, the societal bills that surround substance abuse disorders are dramatic. Millions, you talk about the country, billions of dollars that we're talking about, incarceration, treatment, and the list goes on and on and on and on and on. I'm here in complete support of LD-1537 with the mindset that this is the starting point. This is not an ending point for where this needs to go. The drug agent's incredibly important, enforcement is a big deal, is a part of this equation. I tell you that as a former MDEA Special Agent in Campbell County, I tell you that as somebody who ran the Campbell County Drug Task Force for a while, I tell you that as the chief of an agency that arrests more than thirty-six hundred people a year, all right, enforcement's important, but it's not the end game. It's a piece of this equation. We cannot arrest our way out of this problem, but arrest will continue to be a component of the overall solution with huge airports, right? We want to put traffickers in jail where they belong for running poison in our communities and killing people every day. That will continue. But if we fail to address the other two legs of this three-legged stool, which is prevention and treatment, then we will fail, period. We've seen that already. War on drugs, oh, warrior on the war on drugs, right? Leave the jars, arresting people. I didn't realize that I stunk so bad when I was at MDA, apparently, but apparently everybody stinks over there. Then, you know, that's a piece of this pie. Arrested a bunch of people over the years. That's not the answer to this thing. And prevention, on the prevention side, we're talking about treatment and enforcement. That means the problem already exists. We need to prevent as soon as humanly possible, early and often. Our kids, everybody needs to hear this, early and often. And then if that doesn't work, then in fact, we need to treat everybody in a humane fashion. And there is not enough treatment options in the state of Maine. I'm at tables all the time talking to providers that have no idea where those folks come from, none. Everybody's beating their head against the wall, wondering where all this treatment is. It doesn't exist. It does not exist. And on the enforcement side of the house, we need these agents, and they need to continue to do that work. And I'm out of time, so I do apologize.
Representative Finn.
Chief, can you tell me how many detox beds are out there coming coming?
I can tell you, I believe in the state of Maine, period, sixteen, and they're about a block down the street from the Portland Police Department, Milestone Foundation on Industry. And we had additional beds with Mercy Center, which closed, by the way, because it couldn't survive in Westbrook recently. So I believe there are sixteen total. The tens is the tip of the iceberg, but incredibly important that we have some other options out there across the state.
Follow-up. Sure.
Lost it.
Your honor. Lost the question.
What about the individual that's on heroin that comes to your facility similar to the same thing, same people come to Scottsboro, they seem to be having an option. What kind of options do they have for that person that does several times and wants heroin?
Well, I'll tell you, where we lacked in the city of Portland is to provide those options. I will tell you that tomorrow morning, as a matter of fact, we are interviewing for a position called a Substance Abuse Disorder Liaison Position, a full-time position that will be a Portland Police Department employee, which will allow us to give options to individuals. Where we failed miserably, fourteen people overdosed in twenty-four hours, at no point did anybody ask any of those individuals, hey, can we get you plugged into something else, right? The classic model out there currently is you go, you dust people off, you Narcan them, maybe they go to the hospital, maybe they don't, and then they're out, shortly they're after them. Narcan, miracle drug. Five people in the city of Portland have been Narcaned twice. Three people have been Narcaned, I'm sorry, three people have been Narcaned three times. One person has been Narcaned ten times, ten times. We've got to break this cycle of just doing the same thing over and over. You can hear it on a regular basis, right? The definition of insanity, the definition of crazy, we just keep doing the same thing all over again, expecting things to change. We've got to change the model. Guarantees, you're either a part of the solution or you're part of the problem. And I'm probably proud to say that law enforcement is becoming part of the solution rather than part of the problem. But we want to provide those options, you know, moving forward, and I think we're going to do that. Which to speak to part B, which has been mentioned a couple of times, Operation Hope is an incredible resource, kudos to Chief Morton in Scarborough and Officer Field. I would say that I like the language that says innovative approaches by law enforcement. So on my end, I would like a shot at some of that funding for this substance abuse disorder liaison position, so it's not just focused on Operation Hope. That would be my preference in the language, and I believe that language currently exists.
Senator Casey. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Chief. Thanks for being here. We've inspected the number of detox beds in the state. Do you recall how many Mercy did have and the reasons for their closure? Property crime overall is down, crime is down. My robberies are through the roof, fifty percent increase in 2015 in comparison to 2014. That's not to say, uh, that because you suffer from a substance abuse disorder that you're a criminal. That is to say that just like any other neighborhood, any other population, there is a small percentage of that group that is committing crimes in our communities to support their habits, to survive, day to day, and that's what they're trying to do. They don't wanna get sick. The point turns into an issue where you're not no longer trying to get high, right? You see, high, you think that's, that's fun. You're trying to survive day to day. And as a piece of that, uh, there are a small percentage of folks that are committing crimes in our community. And I would definitely say that those robbery increases are due to this drug issue, certainly in the city of Portland. Now, I've said the city of Portland a few times. What I will guarantee in this very dynamic, uh, situation, complex situation around substance abuse disorders, there's a list of guarantees. The very first one is this, this problem does not care about borders, or demographics, rural versus urban, it does not care. Doesn't care how much money you're making, doesn't care how old you are, it impacts everybody. And that needs to be said, certainly in this chamber here in Augusta as well, because we can have issues around, well, northern Maine versus southern Maine, this is impacting everybody, everybody, across the board. It's incredibly important that we try to get a handle on this thing. So it doesn't care about borders one way or the other. Another guarantee, we can pay now, or we can pay later. You're gonna pay the societal bills that surround substance abuse disorders are dramatic, millions, you talk about the country, billions of dollars that we're talking about, incarceration, treatment, uh, and the list goes on and on and on and on and on. I'm here in complete support of LD-1537 with a mindset that this is the starting point. This is not an ending point for where this needs to go. The drug agents incredibly important, uh, enforcement is a big deal, is a part of this equation. I tell you that as a former MDEA special agent in Campbell County, I tell you that as somebody ran the Campbell County Drug Task Force program, I tell you that as the chief of an agency that arrests more than thirty-six hundred people a year, all right? Enforcement's important, but it's not the end game, it's a piece of this equation. We cannot arrest our way out of this problem, but arrest will continue to be a component of the overall solution with huge air quotes, right? We wanna put traffickers in jail where they belong for running poison in our communities and killing people every day. That will continue. But if we fail to address the other two legs of this three-legged stool, which is prevention and treatment, then we will fail, period. We've seen that already. War on drugs, oh, warrior on the war on drugs, right? Lead the charge, arresting people. I didn't realize that I stunk so bad when I was at MDA, apparently, but apparently everybody stinks over there. Then, you know, that's a piece of this pie, arrested a bunch of people over the years. That's not the answer to this thing. And prevention, on the prevention side, uh, we're talking about treatment and enforcement, that means the problem already exists. We need to prevent as soon as humanly possible, early and often. Our kids, everybody needs to hear this, early and often. And then if that doesn't work, then in fact, we need to treat everybody in a humane fashion. And there is not enough treatment options in the state of Maine. I'm at tables all the time talking to providers that have no idea where those folks come from, none. Everybody's beating their head against the wall, wondering where all this treatment is. It doesn't exist, it does not exist. And on the enforcement side of the house, we need these agents, and they need to continue to do that work. And I'm out of time, so I do apologize.
Representative Simmons?
Chief, can you tell me how many detox beds are out in Campbell County?
I can tell you, I believe in the state of Maine, period, sixteen, and, uh, they're about a block down the street from the Portland Police Department, Miles Home Foundation on Industry. And, uh, we had additional beds with Mercy Center, which closed, by the way, because it couldn't survive, uh, in Westbrook recently. So I believe there are sixteen total. The tens is the tip of the iceberg, but incredibly important that we have some other options out there across the state.
Follow along, sure.
Lost it.
Your honor, your honor. Lost the question.
Yeah. What about the individual that's on heroin that comes to your facility similar to the same thing, same people come to Scottsboro, they seem to be having an option. What kind of options do you have for that person that does, um, several times and is on heroin?
Well, I'll tell you, the, where we lacked in the city of Portland is to provide those options. I will tell you that tomorrow morning, as a matter of fact, we are interviewing for a position called Substance Abuse Disorder Liaison Position, a full-time position that will be a Portland Police Department employee, which will allow us to give options to individuals. Where we failed miserably, fourteen people overdosed in twenty-four hours, at no point did anybody ask any of those individuals, "Hey, can we get you plugged into something else?" Right? The classic model out there currently is you go, you dust people off, you Narcan them, maybe they go to the hospital, maybe they don't, uh, and then they're out, shortly they're after it. Narcan, miracle drug. Five people in the city of Portland have been Narcans twice. Three people have been Narcans, I'm sorry, three people have been Narcan three times. One person has been Narcan ten times, ten times. We've gotta break this cycle of just doing the same thing all over and over, you can hear it on a regular basis, right? The definition of insanity, the definition of crazy, we just keep doing the same thing all over again, expecting things to change. We've gotta change the model. Guarantees, you're either a part of the solution or you're part of the problem. And I'm pretty proud to say that law enforcement is becoming part of the solution, uh, rather than part of the problem. But we wanna provide those options, you know, moving forward, and I think we're gonna do that. Which is to speak to Part B, which has been mentioned a couple times, uh, Operation Hope is an incredible, uh, resource, kudos to Chief Moulton Scarborough and Officer Gill. I would say that I like the language that says innovative approaches by law enforcement, so, uh, on my end, I would like a shot at some of that funding for this Substance Abuse Disorder Liaison Position, so it's not just focused on Operation Hope. That would be my preference in the language, and I believe that language currently exists.
Representative Kates?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thanks for being here. We've inspected the number of detox beds in the state. Do you recall how many Mercy did have and the reasons for their closure?
Well, I will tell you that the reason for the closure was when reimbursement rates were reduced, they couldn't survive. I mean, the business model is such that essentially they're giving away, uh, business, which, as Officer Gill stated, you know, scholarships and freebies will only get you so far. We've gotta be able to support these entities. I don't know exactly the number of beds, and they will say that some of those have moved to the State Street facility, which is the standard Mercy Hospital, uh, as from a detox perspective. I also hear that they're tough to get into, just like every place else in the state.
No further?
Thank you very much.
Matthew, is it Hammond? Matthew from Augusta. Going once, going twice, okay. And then I've got a Matthew Braun? Brown, Braun?
Brown.
Braun?
German spelling.
Well, that's why I said Braun.
Good afternoon. Senator Rosen, Senator Hanper, Representatives Rotundo and Powell, and members of the Joint Committee on Criminal Justice and Public Safety, and the Joint Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs, and also the members of the Health and Human Services. I'm glad you're here too, and I will also be a test of mine on those parts this afternoon. My name is Matthew Brown, and I'm here as a private citizen of Westbrook to testify in support of LD-1537. I'm also a person in long-term recovery from substance use disorder and a member of the Prevention and Harm Reduction Workgroup of the Maine O.P. Collaborative. Additionally, I'm on the advisory board of my brother's keeper, a new mentoring program for men, reentering society after incarceration in Campbell County. I support law enforcement involvement in drug-related efforts, and I think preventing the trafficking of heroin and other drugs throughout our state is an important part of mitigating this epidemic, but I believe that this overshadows significantly Part B of this bill. Substantial rehabilitation and other supportive services are of paramount importance to people while in prison and when reentering society. As an advocate and a mentor, I've seen firsthand that men and women are less likely to experience recidivism when given the proper supports. I've also seen firsthand that many of those reentering society in our state sadly do not receive the support they need. In the past decade, Sweden changed their outlook on the criminal justice system. Mills Oberg, Director General of Sweden's Prison and Probation Service, says that Sweden has rehabilitation in the heart of its penal program. In an article attached to the back of my testimony, Oberg mentions that some people have to be incarcerated. I agree. But that has to be a goal to get them back out into society in better shape for them. This population has been so successful that Sweden has reduced the number of prisons and has even closed four of its fifty-six prisons also. That's remarkable. Many inmates are going to one day be released back into society, and they should. How they leave jail is up to us. Much of the general public is fearful of inmates' reentry and may even go so far to say that they should never be released. As a person with a substance use disorder, I am a member of a population that is severely stigmatized and even discriminated against. When men and women have on top of that a criminal background and jail sentence, the discrimination and stigma is much, much worse. I'm not the same person I was six years ago, and it's because I received the supports that I need. Inmates need people who will advocate for them, and they deserve help putting their lives back together. Let's make sure their time is beneficial and their reentry is successful. I hope you share my view that they should become productive members of society. Thus, while I encourage you to vote out to pass, I hope to make sure that Part B receives the funding and attention it deserves. Thank you for considering my testimony and this very important bill, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, thank you for being here today. What helped you to host your recovery?
People cared, and it wasn't necessarily the people who I thought should care. My parents certainly cared, and my friends certainly cared, but I had a detective and my attorney who were working collaboratively to try to get me into rehab, and that's, it's now being more common, but back in 2009, it wasn't nearly as common. And, um, one of the most powerful things to this day, and I put it on my business card because it's so powerful, the, um, head spiritual advisor at the rehab I went to said that people in recovery make the world a better place, and I wholeheartedly believe that. So positive encouragement, um, from anyone is, is huge. But making sure that a whole continuum of care is, um, is understood and addressed like it is in the start of this bill is, is huge too.
I do, thank you for sharing that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take the time. Was there an attachment? Mr. Brown?
Brown.
Was there an attachment to your testimony?
You mentioned an attachment, and I didn't have it on mine, but, oh, okay. It sounds like a great article, I just wanted to know that we had it.
Before we get started, I wonder if I could just ask, there's one of my colleagues who needs to leave early, and she hasn't been able to sign up.
Want to switch?
Uh, she hasn't signed up yet.
Oh.
Can she just come after you?
Uh, are you trying to leave together, is that the idea, or?
I think I can go later, if I can go later.
Well, no, I've got, I've got another dozen behind you waiting, so.
I'm happy to do it for my time.
Yield back the balance of your time.
I'll come back later.
Okay.
You'll see me later.
All right.
Hi, I'm Claudia Green. I'm from Freeport, Maine. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'm a nurse of twenty-four years of experience, but mostly I'm a mother of a young man who's an addict. Much like any chronic illness, it's taken several attempts to find the right plan of care for my son to experience recovery. I have no illusions being a